Ladies and gentlemen, when everyone please stand for the pledge. At this time I'd like to introduce Jerry McNamara if he'd come up to the podium. Jerry McNamara served the United States Marine Corps in Vietnam for two years. He served in the rank of Corporal and was wounded twice. Corporal McNamara is a recipient of two Purple Hearts, Combat Action Ribbon, President's Unite Citation, the Marine Corps Good Conduct Medal, National Defense Service Medal, the Vietnam Service Medal, and the Republic of Vietnam Campaign Medal. Mr. McNamara, thank you for your service. The floor is yours.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, when everyone please stand for a moment of silence. We're just keeping our thoughts and prayers. Deputy Sheriff William J. Gentry, who lost his life, he's a sheriff in Florida, also Police Officer Robert Pitts. And this is definitely last but not least. Twenty-three-year-old Cordy Harder of St. Joseph, Missouri, died after a road rage incident where they didn't catch a corporate who stabbed him to death. Mr. Harder was also a member of the Missouri Air National Guard and had one tour in Iraq. So please keep these three heroes in our thoughts and prayers while we go through our day, keep their families in our thoughts and prayers also. Thank you. We're gonna, we're gonna take one. Yeah, wait, one second. One second. Okay. I'd like to bring this Wednesday, May 16th Board of Commissioners meeting to order 10:12 a.m. in the Commissioners' Conference Room. I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion for the reading of the previous meetings minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Can I have a real call?
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellamy?
Yes. Opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. We, we have a, we have an event coming up in the next two weeks, and at this time I'd like to bring up Jerry McNamara. I know all of us know Jerry. Jerry is a hero to all of us for his service in Vietnam, and also he's the father of Jerry McNamara, Syracuse superstar and professional basketball player. Jerry, would you like to get up and let's talk about, let's talk about Jimmy Reddington and what's going on?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here today to talk a little bit about Jimmy Reddington. Jimmy was born April 6, 1947, in the Marvin section of Scranton. In 1951, along with his mother and sister, Jimmy moved to the Weston Field area of Scranton. He attended Bancroft Elementary School, went to Scranton Technical High School, excelled in varsity, baseball, basketball, and swimming, and football. Great athlete, bottom line. Graduated in 1965. Upon graduation, Jimmy joined the United States Marine Corps. He arrived at Da Nang, Vietnam in late November 1966. Jimmy was assigned to the Third Platoon, Echo Company, Second Battalion, Fifth Marines. On March 23rd, 1967, Jimmy was killed in action in Operation Newcastle at the age of nineteen. Jimmy earned two Purple Hearts and ten other medals and ribbons, and was beloved by his fellow Marines, Echo Company 2-5. Jimmy's medals and ribbons have never been issued. On Saturday, May 26th, this is about to change because of Jimmy's friends. Once they got together, they wanted to do something about the fact that Jimmy's, Jimmy's medals were never issued. I have a list of the medals, some of which Pat just mentioned, but I'm gonna mention them again because I think they're so important and so impressive when you think about it. Lance Corporal Jimmy Reddington, for his service in the United States Marines, has earned the following awards, which are listed in order of precedence. He received the Purple Heart Medal with one gold star for wounds received in action against the enemy on December 20th, 1966, and on March 23rd, 1967, resulting in his death. He received the Combat Action Ribbon for service in Vietnam, the Presidential Unit Citation, the Marine Corps Good Conduct Medal, the National Defense Service Medal, the Vietnam Service Medal, the Vietnamese Cross of Gallantry with Palm, the Military Merit Medal, the Republic of Vietnam Meritorious Unit Citation, and the Republic of Vietnam Campaign Medal. Jimmy may have been in the Marine Corps for a short time, but he certainly accomplished a lot at the time that he was there. Charlie Boylan, a Scranton native, who knew Jimmy when, when they were kids, and Jimmy was kinda like a big brother to Charlie back in those days. Charlie visited his grave for years at the Cathedral Cemetery, and upon inquiring one day at the cemetery office, Charlie found out that some of Jimmy's former Marine comrades who were with Jimmy when he died tended to Jimmy's grave. Charlie was able to get in touch with Joe Silvestri of Delaware County, Pennsylvania. Joe and Jimmy had become friends while serving together in the same platoon in Vietnam. Joe was wounded on the same day that Jimmy was killed. Charlie then contacted Jimsters Necky, another one of Jimmy's hometown friends, and they began contact of all, all of Jimmy's friends. Sorry. Most, most of those friends are from Weston Field, a proud bunch of guys who used to be there playing ball every day of the week. They got together to tell everybody just, to the story about Charlie meeting Joe and that he was with Jimmy in Vietnam. Joe Silvestri, on the other hand, once he got contacted by Charlie, he contacted, contacted Brad Varney and Bob Wora, who also served with Jimmy in Vietnam. Since that time that they've all gotten together, we all have been coming to Jimmy's grave during Memorial Day weekend with Charlie, Joe, Brad, Bob, and the Weston Field friends, and we've been doing that for the last probably twenty years now. I think the first time we were at the gravesite, there might have been ten of us. The next time, there might have been twenty. The next time, there was probably fifty, and the time after that, there was probably a hundred. So it's grown since then and continues to grow as the word spread about Jimmy and, and his friends, dedicated to the fact that fifty years ago, when he was killed in Vietnam, they're still coming to visit his grave. And every time you go to the grave, the flags are new, the flowers are new.
They are.
Everything looks like it was just presented today because of the way they take care of his gravesite. Another one of those friends, and our committee chairman, Attorney Ernie Preate, last year was, was at his college reunion, his fiftieth college reunion, and one of his friends at, from the University of Pennsylvania that he graduated with, was Lieutenant General Ron Christmas. When General Christmas heard the story about Jimmy and how the friends all gather and get together, he told Ernie that he would like to join us to pay tribute to Jimmy and his friends. That was a year ago. On Saturday, May 26th, at 11 o'clock at the Scranton, at the courthouse in downtown Scranton, Lieutenant General Ron Christmas, the legendary hero of the Battle of Way, while with the Second Battalion, Fifth Marines, that's Jimmy's unit and my unit, and who was awarded the Navy Cross for extraordinary heroism, will present Jimmy's medals to the Marine Corps League Northeast Detachment, where the, where the Marine Corps has directed that they will be held in repose and displayed. Surviving members of Echo Company, Second Battalion, Fifth Marines, including Commanding Officer Terry Ebert and friends of Jimmy, have planned this memorial. None of this would have been possible without the extraordinary efforts of dedicated, the dedicated friendship of Charlie Boylan and Joe Silvestri. I think Jimmy still has a, his family, he has no living relatives, and that's one of the reasons why his medals have never been claimed. So immediate family is, is who's allowed to get the medals. So I think he does have some family, he has an adopted family with Charlie and Jimmy and the rest of his friends. Also on Saturday, at Jimmy's ceremony, the Vietnam War Commemorative Assistant Director Larry Brahm will be on hand to present all veterans who served from November 1st, 1955 to May 15th, 1975, with the Vietnam Lappel pin, which I happen to be wearing today. I got mine a few weeks ago when General Jackson was here to present us with a proclamation. The front of the pin says Vietnam War Veteran, and on the back of the pin, it's a, says A Grateful Nation Thanks and Honors You, U.S. Vietnam War Commemorative. Now, the thing about this pin is that anybody who served during those dates, 1955 to 1975, will be awarded that pin, and they'll be awarded that pin if they're with us on Saturday that day. There'll be a booth set up, and they'll take the pin, and they'll give them some literature along with the pin and, and honor those veterans. Now, in order to receive the pin, you, you didn't have to be in country in Vietnam, because as long as you were in the service during that time period, then obviously you supported the war. Because like, like me and most veterans, once you were in the military, you didn't get to choose where you were going, they told you where you were going. So in one way or another, if you, even if you weren't in country, you did support the effort of what was going on in the war at that time. So they need to know, people need to know and understand that you didn't have to be in country. If you were in the service, that meant that you supported the, the efforts. Another thing that we wanna let everybody know is that there's gonna be a short march will take place on that same day, right before the ceremony. We start from where, Ernie?
Right at the Hilton.
We're gonna start at the Hilton and then do a little march around to the front of the, the building at the courthouse. So we're requesting that all Marines and all Vietnam veterans join us in this short march.
Blessings.
So if they come that day and they're there that day, we, we would love to have them participate with us and march to the podium. Also, the same weekend, on Sunday, May, May 27th at 11 o'clock, there's gonna be a ceremony, a memorial ceremony with full military honors at Jimmy's gravesite. And again, General Christmas will be there, Bagpipers will be there.
And the Marine Honor Guard.
And the Marine Honor Guard will all be there that day. So both events are free and open to the public, and we encourage everybody, if at all possible, to join us that day and support these efforts. Thank you.
Great. Commissioner Cummings?
I'd just like to thank both you and all of you that came in, and Ernie, for pulling all this together and bringing it to our attention in the public and honoring a hero for our community.
Thank you. We support, we appreciate the support that we've gotten from everybody as well.
Absolutely. Congratulations.
Commissioner Terriani?
You guys have done a phenomenal job. It's absolutely unbelievable what you were able to accomplish to get that general, famous, famous general in the Marine Corps to come here, Ernie and Chair and everybody. It's just a great group, and I, good luck with it, and I hope it goes off well. I hope we have good weather for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ernie, would you like to say a few words to anyone else I know?
Thank you very much. Jerry settled everything. Excuse me.
Jerry, thank you.
I, I do wanna point out that the procession, the march, will be from the Hilton on Saturday, 11 o'clock.
Adams Avenue onto Spruce.
Adams Avenue to Spruce.
Sidewalk on Washington.
And it's gonna be led by the, the, our famous Greater Scranton Black Diamond Bagpipers. Also, following them would be the Marine Corps Color Guard. And we were able to, through General Christmas's help, to get the White House to free up the Color Guard and divert them from going to USS Intrepid to come to Scranton to be present for this incredibly strong remembrance that many of these people have been going through for decades, and, and so have you, Commissioner. You've been a part of this, without any fanfare, without any publicity, you've been there. We know it, all right? And you stepped up when we needed it, you've stepped up with money, and you've produced this wonderful booklet. I have to give credit to Kurt Camoni and Rebecca Smith. We just got the final product yesterday. It couldn't have happened without you, and we, we absolutely are blessed to have the support of you and all the Commissioners. Mr. Terriani, you've been financially terrific to us also personally, and we sure appreciate that. The two events are gonna be, some, I think there's gonna be national publicity on this because the story gets out of how Joe Silvestri looked for this grave for thirty years and couldn't find it. Finally, he found it in 1994, and then he found out that there was another guy, Charlie Boylan, that was also going there, and the two of them have hooked up, and that's twenty-five years ago almost, and now we're at this presentation of the medals. So it's a great story.
Congratulations.
It's a great human interest story, and Lackawanna County should be proud of all the guys that have been part of this, and you've been part of it too. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just really brief. I'd like to thank our Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Cummings, for making sure she attends a meeting, Commissioner Terriani. This really was a labor of honor for all of our veterans. This is about, as much as it's about Jimmy Reddington, it's about everyone who came home from Vietnam and the honor that they deserve, and they should be thanked forever. They really should be. The lapel pins, I think that's fabulous. Jerry, thanks for bringing that up. Anyone from 1955 to 1975 that was in the service can receive a lapel pin at the Jimmy Reddington Memorial Event at the courthouse, 11 o'clock sharp, Washington Avenue side. Please come out. The more the merrier. It's gonna be great. I think it's gonna be a great honor for Jimmy and all of his friends. And you know, like we always say, you know, your friends are the relatives you get to choose. So you know what? Jimmy might not have relatives, but he really does. All of his friends are his relatives. So thank you for everything that you guys have done, and especially for Sunday, which is 11 o'clock, which will actually be at Jimmy Reddington's grave, where all of his friends have been going for decades to see him, and this will be a great honor that following Sunday to be there, to honor him at his grave. And please also remember Monday's Memorial Day. Get out to all the memorial services. Remember all of our servicemen and women for all that they do. And if it wasn't for the, all of this, all of those servicemen and women that's, that made the ultimate sacrifice, we would not be sitting here today. With that being said, I'd like to have Gerard Hatman come up just for a brief summary of the Armed Forces Parade, because that is coming up this Saturday.
Indeed.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me come in to talk about the Armed Forces Parade. It's a pleasure to serve on the Armed Forces Parade Committee at your direction. So this year, the Armed Forces Parade steps off on Saturday, May 19th, 11 a.m. from the Gino Merle Center on Penn Avenue in downtown Scranton. The parade then follows Penn Avenue, makes a left onto Lackawanna, past the marketplace at Steamtown, and then makes another left onto North Washington Avenue before it wraps up in front of the Lackawanna County Courthouse. This year, the parade features three divisions. We have approximately seventy-five entries in the parade, a variety of different civic groups, veterans, organizations, military units, and also marching bands. We have ten marching bands from in and around Lackawanna County. I think that's our all-time high, so we're really excited about that. Even some other groups from around the area. We're fortunate now that we see the parade evolving into kind of a regional event where we've got attention and interest from groups throughout northeast PA. We've got the GDS Fair entered in from up in Wayne County, I think it's Newfoundland. They came and wanted to be a part of it. So it's really good. The word is spreading, and we see a lot of interest from around the region. We're really happy about that. Again, three divisions, seventy-five entries, and our grand marshal is Joe Sylvester. We're excited.
Joe Sylvester.
Exactly, yes. I should note that he respectfully and humbly tried to decline it in a very good way, but the committee really convinced him to do that. He's well-deserving of the honor, certainly for all he does for the veteran community in our area and across the country. So the committee's very excited to have Joe as the grand marshal. It's truly something special. We should note there's some other events going on that day that are new this year. The Courthouse Square will host the Show Your Stripes 5K Race and Walk for the Ronald McDonald House that starts at 9:30 a.m. That's new this year to the parade. It's a long-running event, but this year the Ronald McDonald House, to try to boost the atmosphere downtown on parade day, decided to do it downtown on the streets, so we're thrilled to have that cooperation. And also after the parade, there'll be various displays of military vehicles and equipment courtesy of Toby Hannah Army Depot and supporting agencies. Most of the equipment is representative of what they service and work with every day in the field to keep our troops ready and active. So you'll see some really neat electronics and vehicles. They've also got some historic aircraft, mostly helicopters, that they'll have on display. So check it out. Also, Pocono Raceway is a good partner for this. They've got some actual stock cars and also pace cars and trucks that they'll have, so check those out as well. Some of those things will actually roll in the parade, so that's why we ask folks to check it out after the parade wraps up from about 1:00 to 3:00, because we want everything to be there so people can come and see it after it completes the parade route. Displays again organized by Toby Hannah. They'll actually have an on-the-spot job fair, is what they're calling it, but they're gonna interview folks, candidates for potential employment at Toby Hannah right there, and we're, we're arranging it so they can actually do a very preliminary interview on the spot for anyone seeking employment at Toby Hannah. And I guess they've got a bunch of vacancies, they're excited about the prospects, trying to get some good candidates the day of the parade. So that's all for the parade. We've got the luncheon also this Thursday, I should note, tomorrow. The reservation deadline is officially passed, but if anyone's still interested today, they can call 570-615-7308. That's Toby Hannah's Morale Welfare and Recreation Office. They've been organizing the luncheon this year, so we're happy to have that back.
Gerard, great job. You got a lot in, a lot in there in those five minutes.
It's an active event. There's, there's a lot, there's a lot new, there's a lot that's really exciting this year that's either new or coming back, so we're happy to see the parade evolve in a good direction.
Commissioner Cummings?
Gerard, you do exactly what you do at all the meetings that you go to. You're very professional, and you do very well.
Oh, thank you.
And even before the bell rings, you're done.
I try, so. You gotta practice that when you go to some of those places.
I know, personally. But yeah, so you do an excellent job, and every time I talk to anybody out in the community, they tell me how professional you are and how, what a great guy you are.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate you. You know, I mean, you are an asset to the county, and, and I'm proud to have you on staff, so.
Thank you.
Good job, and thank you.
Commissioner Terriani?
Great job, Gerard.
Thank you. I should note, just before I go, this, the committee has been excellent in, in putting this together, and some new organizations that have either joined the fray or stepped up even more in the past, like Toby Hannah, Pocono Raceway, Ronald McDonald House, they've been a tremendous asset, as has Colonel Clancy, who's the commander of the National Guard units that form the, the basis of the parade. He's new in town this year. You'll see, I think, a lot more of him because he seems to embrace the public relations role that comes as part of his assignment. So we think he's gonna be a great partner for, for our office and for the community going forward.
Thanks, Gerard.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, everyone, remember Saturday, May 19th, the parade steps off at 11 a.m. Come on out and honor all of our servicemen and women. You see all the equipment, and there's a lot of great partners. I think it's gonna be a great event, and there's gonna be a lot of displays and a lot of opportunities to have some quality family time and honor all of our servicemen and servicewomen. At this time, we're gonna go into proclamation presentations, 18-0111, Good Works in Lackawanna County. Stephanie Longo, would you come up to the podium? Stephanie, talk to us, okay? You got, you're the author of The Italians of Lackawanna County. We got a copy right here, and I definitely wanna autograph on it today if we can. Talk to us about the heritage, and I know you put, there's a lot of, there's a lot going on in Lackawanna County.
It's amazing. My Italian-American heritage is my passion. For anybody who knows me, that's really the bread and butter of what I do. I love celebrating Italian-American heritage in this region. My family is from the town of Guardia dei Lombardi in Avellino Province, and it's just been something that we've carried with us ever since I was a child, to really celebrate where we come from. Because if you forget where you come from, you're never going to really know where you're going if you don't honor the past. So my background is actually in Italian-American history. I'm a University of Scranton class of 2003 graduate with a major in Italian, and I have a master's degree in history and a second one in journalism. So you could tell, I just love history and writing and all of that, and I realize that in our area, people don't really consider northeastern Pennsylvania, and especially Lackawanna County, an Italian area, and that is so wrong. When you stop and think about Italian enclaves in Pennsylvania, you start to think mainly of Philadelphia and Pittsburgh. You don't really think of northeastern Pennsylvania. But as I say in the introduction to that book, which is actually a follow-up to my first book, which is The Italians of Northeastern Pennsylvania, in the 2010 census, the towns of Dunmore and Old Forge actually ranked as top ten in the nation in terms of Italian population. So we have a very strong Italian population here.
We got to tell Kurt Camoni that up in Jessup. I don't know, they're not, they're...
Well, you know what? I'm getting to Jessup because as you see, and Kurt knows this really well from, they're the cover of the book, and there's a very good reason as to why Jessup is the cover of the book, and I hope they don't drum me out of Dunmore for this.
Let's talk about it. What's, what's going on Memorial Day weekend?
Saint Ubaldo, La Festa dei Cari. The reason why I really advocated for La Corso dei Cari to be the cover of the book is because in my honest-to-God opinion, and Kurt, I hope that you back me up on this, Jessup is the standard bearer for the Italian enclaves of Lackawanna County because everything there is done as a carbon copy as to what it is in Italy. And they actually hosted the book launch for me, and it was phenomenal. I can't thank everybody in Jessup enough, and if you know anything about Italian-American culture, I'm southern Italian, they're northern Italians, so for the fact that they actually accepted a southern Italian girl as part of their ranks, it's pretty cool, and I can't say enough of wonderful things about Jessup.
Let's talk about the history.
Sure.
Two places in the world. Where's the race at? Gubio, Italy, and where?
And Jessup.
And Jessup.
Yes.
Jessup.
And in the book, you can see a lot of beautiful photos of the Corso dei Cari in Jessup. What I tried to do with that one, if you're familiar with anything that's being said about Italian-American history and culture, we get a bad rap, unfortunately. There's the mafia stereotype, there's the Goomba stereotype, and that's not who we are as an ethnicity. We are so much more than that. If you look through the annals of American culture, we have doctors, we have lawyers, we have people who have been in the arts. You name it, any piece of culture, an Italian-American has had his or her hand in that, and I really wanted to celebrate that in this book because we're not the stereotype. We are so much more than that, and the fact that in Lackawanna County, we celebrate it so well. And I have to give Fran a shout-out because Lackawanna County, for Fran to help me out with getting some of the photos of the county things, all three of you are in the book, by the way, so. There's some really wonderful things that you've done. You, as a county, celebrate our heritage so beautifully and so well, so it was a true labor of love, and I can't thank you all enough for supporting me with it because this is what I'm passionate about, so grazie.
Grazie. Commissioner Cummings?
Well, you also have the first female commissioner of Lackawanna County as an Italian.
Oh, wow. Wonderful. Al guri.
Well, I don't speak it, but whatever you said, I'll say it back.
It means it's wonderful and best wishes.
Thank you.
Yes.
So yes, I definitely appreciate your book and the work you're doing. Seems that Irish people tend to marry Italian people around here, so.
What's happening?
But it's the best of all world, right?
But I mean, you have, what? Well, I mean, we're kind of a mix, but Irish and Italian are sitting up here, so.
But they're the, they're the two, the number one and number two ethnicity in Lackawanna County, and depending on who you speak to, either one could be number one or number two, so that's pretty cool, I think.
Well, I love your book. Thank you for the work you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Terriani?
I haven't been able to finish reading the book yet. Fran told me you're gonna bring me one today.
Yes, and you know what? I sold out. It was totally unexpected, but I will be bringing some down to the county office for all three of you, so you have it.
I have Paul Cadlano. I told him his picture was in there, and he's very excited to see it.
Oh, great.
I grew up in a half-Italian household, and my favorite part of it is always the food. Our, our daughter spent a semester in Rome, absolutely loved it. She speaks a little bit Italian now, and she also does written journalism and theater, and she absolutely loves it there, and I won't be surprised if she's back there for extended periods relatively soon.
If she could get her dual citizenship, that's what my family did, and it's a wonderful thing to have, because we're so proud to be American, and now we also have that as part of it, so.
Great job.
We can do it.
It's, it's important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephanie, I know this is a labor of love. There's Justin G. and Betty. I just noticed, there's Justin out there.
Do you know how happy he is that he is on that cover?
Oh, oh my God, I can't even imagine. He must be thrilled. But no, I know this is a labor of love, and like I said, that weekend is a great weekend. I mean, it starts on Wednesday with Dominic Perini over at Fire Station Number, Number Two, and it ends on, it actually goes all the way up till Monday. Like, it's a great week. It really is in Jessup. And Saturday... Saturday, what is it, the 26th? What would you say, 5:00 to get a good spot on the Main Street in Jessup? 5:00?
The Alzata, the Raising of the Saints, is at noon at St. Michael's Church.
Why don't you go up to the, Kurt, quick?
That's not this week.
No, it's next.
The Alzata, or the Raising of the Saints, starts at 12:00 noon at St. Michael's Church. And then, the actual corsa, or the race, starts at 5:30. But we usually get somewhere between 8,000 and 10,000 people into town. So, you do want to get there a little early.
So, start coming in, 4:00, 4:30, get a good spot.
Absolutely. And the people in town treat everybody like family. So, you'll have a great time.
And it's so great because what's so neat about it is, as the saints progress through the course, the crowd goes with it. It's amazing. And there's house parties everywhere. Everybody's smiling. Everybody's happy. It's such a great...
And a little-known fact, Commissioner O'Malley actually ran with the family of St. George. I have a picture to prove it. I'll be delivering that here.
Oh, I want to see that one.
Absolutely.
But no, thank you to both of you. But thank you, Stephanie. I know, like I said, I know this is a labor of love. And you put so much time and effort into it. Thank you so much. We have a certificate of recognition. The County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Stephanie Longo in honor of her choosing a designation individual providing great works in Lackawanna County given the 16th day of May of 2018 by Commissioner O'Malley, Commissioner Cummings, and Commissioner Nottieri. Thank you. Would you like to come forward?
I should say grazie.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I should say grazie.
Congratulations.
Grazie.
Good job.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Malley's really excited about it, though.
I'll be bringing it. Here we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Here, I want you to autograph this before you go.
Okay.
Thank you. No, I know how much work you put into this.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, nice. It's personalized. It's better.
Thanks, Stephanie. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I'll talk to you soon.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you again.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
That works. Very nice. Okay. Stephanie, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Okay. Commissioner Cummings?
Small Business Spotlight, we have Creative and Performing Arts Academy of NEPA. Small Business Spotlight by Michael and Sherri Melcher, the directors of Kappa of NEPA.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having us here.
Good morning. Kids are coming in.
Appreciate it. The Creative and Performing Arts Academy is in its 20th year, but we're entering our second year here in Lackawanna County. We recently took over the Ritz Building located at 222 Wyoming. And we are coming up on our year and a half mark. It's been an amazing year and a half. We have gotten the theater open. We have undergone some pretty substantial renovations with regards to overhauling the heat and air conditioning in the building, new curtain packages, sound systems. We have been painting, dusting, repairing pretty much nonstop for the last year and a half. But it's paid off substantially with a couple of major achievements. We hosted over 50 events so far since we reopened back in September of 2016. Those events include children's theater, weddings, national headliners, but also a substantial number of local artists and performers. We are continuing to build. For the first time in over two decades, the Ritz Building is fully occupied. There are six thriving businesses now in the building that have all expressed pretty strongly that, you know, Kappa being at the Ritz has really been a major uptick in their daily traffic and their daily business. And actually, the newest store just opened this past weekend and enjoyed over 2,000 people that came through to see our children's productions of Lion King and Aladdin. The building itself is just an absolute treasure. We just celebrated at the New Year's Spectacular, the 110th year celebration of the first performance that occurred in the building. It's one of the oldest theaters in the region. It's seen some of the biggest stars, and the stories are endless. Part of the saying, if you can make it in Scranton, you can make it anywhere, comes from theaters just like the Ritz, where they used to workshop and try out shows before they'd put up the money to take them to New York. And we're hoping to continue that tradition in the coming years. We are already on track to do twice as many events. We have close to 65 events already on the books. They include two national organizations that are bringing their conventions here. And we're working in partnership with the local hotels to be able to support those organizations. One's coming from Texas and one is actually a world competition that's coming.
Mike, have you spoke to Kurt Kimmoney?
Wonderful partner with the visitors.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Yes, exactly. Yes. That's actually where we, yes. If you're not a member, if you're a business and you're not a member of the Visitors Bureau, you're losing money because they've actually, they were instrumental. And we're actually in process of putting together a third proposal for another national organization. We are in a, even though we've undertaken a pretty massive job, we are continuing with our growth. The HVAC system is going in. We are now in the final phase of making the theater handicap accessible for the first time in 110 years. We are reopening the restaurant downstairs with a café. But we look to have it support one of our newest offerings, which launches next weekend. We are investing in a semi-professional format where we utilize local talent, local designers, carpenters, electricians, our local art scene, that partners with incoming professionals to host and launch a new regional dinner theater that would be hosted out of the Ritz. We have two Emmy-nominated artists that are coming in next weekend to lead our cast of Little Shop of Horrors. We brought in the puppets from the national tour. We're really going all out to launch this and see this become a success. Since our opening, we've employed over a dozen employees and local contractors. We're looking to triple that in the next 12 months, not only with the opening of the dinner theater, the café, but we're also partnering with a large music school in Wilkes-Barre that is looking to expand. And they've selected Kappa as their partner. And we're going to be taking over the entire space on the first floor that's currently utilized by attorney Skimmerhorn. And we're going to be putting a whole new music academy in that space, which we're looking at probably close to 20 new teachers that will be hired to fulfill that.
Nice.
A big part of this, and a big part of our success, of course, is the support of the three of you, the city officials, Senator Blake, all of our local representatives who have really gotten behind this project and done some serious heavy lifting. And honestly, it would not be accomplished without the three of you, your forward thinking and appreciation for the arts and seeing what it can do for this community and this downtown.
Well, on that note, there's so many things. When I met with you, that, you know, I so appreciate the work that you're doing. We're looking at a private sector venture here. And I greatly appreciate that. And what can be done in the arts at the private sector level. I love the work you're doing. I get a bad rap in the arts community because they somehow think that I hate them all, but I don't.
I can say you don't. I can attest to that.
Yeah. Yeah. There's just, you know, my priorities over funding is what I look at. But what you're doing is helping me with my priorities. So, I appreciate that. When you came and met with me, the biggest thing that I just thought was so amazing was the fact that they started here in Scranton. You're talking about people coming here and had to actually go to the Ritz in Scranton. Was that what, it was named that all along?
Yes. Yes, it was. Yes, it was named the Ritz.
And from there, it decided on, people came to see, like, you know, I guess, I don't know who these people are that would come in from New York, but they would decide whether or not they were going to come with them to New York.
Yeah.
That's an amazing story. You know, Scranton has been the hub of so many different things throughout history. And this is just one more that they can put on the notch of their belt that, you know, is a great testament to the city and to the county. I just absolutely love that story. And then furthermore, you're going on to provide, you know, after-school programming. And you actually hire teachers, correct? They're not just, can you expand on that?
We require that our lead teachers be degreed in the field they teach. If you teach dance, you're degreed in dance. If you teach theater, you're degreed in theater. But we also require they have at least five years' teaching experience, which makes all the difference in the world. When you're talking to folks that have managed, you know, classrooms of 30 and 40, managing our classrooms of, you know, 15 to 25 become really, really easy. And it creates a kind of, it creates a completely different atmosphere for the kids. It's not chaotic. It's, you know, it's focused. It's, we get, you know, we get a lot of work done, but we also have a lot of fun with it. And that all comes down to the fact that we only hire trained professionals. And when we were doing the breakdown, the average, our average teacher has their master's degree and at least 15 years' teaching in their field. You can't duplicate things like that. That kind of experience is really a major part of our success and a keystone of our program.
And how did you get into this? Expand on that a little, both of you, how you decided to come about with all this?
Sure. Happy to. You know, about 25 years ago, Michael and I worked for an incredible program in the summer. It was, we were living right outside of Philadelphia. I was teaching full-time music in the classroom at a private school at Chestnut Hill in Philadelphia. And Michael was doing development work and other things, but with a tremendous background in theater. So, we started with this summer program, continued there for years, then, you know, ventured out by working for some bigger organizations, JCC, some colleges in the area, then did similar work in youth theaters in Montgomery County, Bucks County, and then worked our way up here. We had a little cabin in the Poconos for many years. And the opportunity came about to do some production work with Harry Connick Jr. on The Happy Elf, which we did a few years ago. But all during that time, the ultimate goal was to create a program like Kappa. So, our heart is always in education and working with kids. So, to find a venue like the Ritz to house that is really a dream come true.
Well, you know, and I'm thrilled to be able to vote on some things that might be able to help you to make that even larger and expand that. Where are the parking arrangements for people that attend?
We have put together a, we have a lease with Wyoming Development that gives us access after 5:00 and on weekends to the 300-space parking lot right across the street.
Awesome.
So, we've become, we're partnering now with a lot of the local restaurants, offering free parking to folks that go to those restaurants. Then, they can come to the theater and park for free to try and get people to come downtown beforehand. We've heard, just this, you know, this last weekend, we're getting a lot of feedback about, you know, how busy everybody was and, you know, just how much our families are bringing to the area. It's, I mean, it's, it seems like a lot of work, but we absolutely love what we're doing. So, it's, I guess that makes it easier. And just to touch back on your comment about privately funded, we run like a nonprofit. We are very much about making sure that, you know, that we're taking care of the kids that need it and that they're there. You know, if they have a passion, whether they can afford it or not, we provide their shoes, we provide their equipment, we provide their scholarship, transportation, meals. But we are committed to being a for-profit organization. We're on track to purchase the Ritz. And it's our dedication that it maintains, it does not fall off the tax rolls by becoming another large institution that becomes nonprofit. We have a very vibrant nonprofit division that handles all of our scholarship, our grant writing, our community outreach. But Kappa, as an organization, is committed to being a for-profit organization.
I just applaud your efforts. And you are a true testament to the area to show that, yes, this can be done, that artists serve a greater opportunity in our area and can do things that they didn't feel were possible. And I applaud your efforts. I applaud the work you're doing. And I will always support your work. I look forward to being just down a block from you in about, I don't know, two months, maybe?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, no, very, absolutely wonderful. I think your story is a great story. And I love to hear how our, the history of our area and how that Ritz Building is so important. And you're renovating this and keeping it there for the sole purpose of a private business, that you're going to employ more people. And I just love this story. Thank you so much for coming in and continued success in the future.
Thank you.
Commissioner Nottieri, any?
A lot of people don't realize that the economic development that arts and culture spur. It's a big part of, Maureen works with us all the time. And it's an important part of it. Our daughter just graduated from the sales and theater. And she's currently working for the Pennsylvania Shakespeare Festival. Absolutely loves it. It's, and the for-profits that can be developed from it, what you're doing with the restaurants, local restaurants, there's...
Hotels, restaurants, people are coming in from all over. This is great.
It's a great thing. And it's a driving force in Scranton, Lackawanna County to go forward and build our economic tax base and just keep going. And you guys did a great job with this. And keep up the good work.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'd just like to thank you for, Kappa Matters. You know, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of students in our community that have a lot of talent. And they need the opportunity. They can't afford it. And you guys are providing that. And that means a lot. Like I said, you know, it's just a matter of someone maybe just finding this little niche or something that they really want to be. And not knowing where to be able to find a way to have it done or be able to do it, you guys are providing that opportunity. The Ritz Theater, amazing history. It's just amazing. Vaudeville, you know, I mean, we're talking about, like, Scranton was the place to be. I mean, this is what it's about. And you're, you know, I mean, this iconic theater is still there. Like, I remember, like, just memories of my father going to see Raging Bull there, you know, at the Ritz with my dad. But let's talk about the 10200 block of Wyoming Avenue. What does the Lackawanna County Government Center mean to those two blocks and to your business?
It's absolutely, there is no way I would be, at this point in the game, stretching ourselves to invest in this café sort of scenario. I know that this is going to make a big impact in our business on a day-to-day, whether it's someone grabbing a cup of coffee or just coming down to have a salad. The city has graciously granted us the variance to put 12 tables out front underneath the marquees so people can enjoy the Wyoming Ave. Everyone that I've spoken to, our investors, our banks, they take that into consideration, the fact that there is new life being breathed into this whole region. And there is no reason that it can't be successful. And so, you know, it was, if it wasn't for the Globe Store reopening, I probably would have mothballed this and put off that new hiring and the new equipment purchases. And it's like the same thing. We order all of our equipment locally. We use all of local vendors.
You're investing in the community. That's what it's about.
Yeah.
And that's what that Globe is going to do for all of us. And what's amazing is the amount of citizens. We're talking about thousands. You know, I mean, not just talking about our employees. I'm talking about everyone that does daily business with Lackawanna County is going to use, are going to utilize that business.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it's, like I said, you're right there. And I believe, like, the 100 block of Wyoming that's for rent, for lease, for sale, that that's good. They're going to all be filled very quickly in the near future.
I know. I know that's the main reason we made this investment. The second you guys settled on the Globe Store, even though we've got our hands full right now, we were not going to miss out on this opportunity. And the thing about it, the beauty about it, is the café continues to support everything we're doing, keeping that 20% scholarship number. At a minimum, 20% of our students receive financial aid. All of that flows back to being able to continue to run the theater as a nonprofit through all of the pieces that support it. And we're really looking forward to having new neighbors.
We're looking forward to you being their neighbors, too. But Michael, Sherri, thank you for everything you've done. And thank you for investing in our future.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cummings?
I'm honored. Yes. Thank you. Hang on one minute. I'm honored to present a certificate of recognition. The County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Kappa, Creative and Performing Arts Academy of Northeastern Pennsylvania. Arts Academy of Northeastern Pennsylvania in honor of achieving the designation of a small business spotlight in Lackawanna County, given the 16th day of May 2018 by Commissioner O'Malley, Commissioner O'Malley and myself, Commissioner Cummings. Come up, I'd be proud to honor you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, sir. Thank you.
What an awesome story.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're thrilled you're here with us.
There we go. Come over and see all this.
Here we go. Maybe a soapbox, that makes the money.
I know.
I feel like Corey.
Thank you so much.
And I'm really glad Maureen's here, because without her
Thank you very much.
She's a big part of all of this. Oh, thank you so much.
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Yes. She's, Maureen's a big part of our success.
Congratulations.
That is so exciting.
Oh, it's great, oh, oh my God.
Wasn't there a song, wasn't there a song made about The Ritz, too?
God, there could have been, I just
Back in the 80s. Wasn't there?
Okay.
That was a great story.
From our Conservation District, we're going to talk about farming activities. With our good friend Jerry Stiles, that cares about our soil and conservation, and Commissioner Cummings, you're
There's my guys.
Morning, Commissioners, thank you very much.
More good news, more good news for the county, more good works for the county.
Thank you for having us. As the Commissioners are aware, the Conservation District does a lot of work with the agricultural community in Lackawanna County. And one of the programs that we administer is a no-til program. We, the district actually owns a no-til cedar that we rent out for a very minimal charge to the agricultural community. We provide the per, the service of towing the cedar to the farm, setting it up, and then taking it to the next farm. I have Eric Johnson here with us. He's going to talk a little bit more about the specifics. But we just received a grant, and we just purchased a new, brand-new cedar. The old cedar that we were using was close to 20 years old, so we just purchased a brand-new cedar using that grant. So Eric's going to come up and just give a couple details on the cedar. And just one thing I wanted to add to that is that the Conservation District is considering purchasing a lime spreader. And we would like to hear from the agricultural community on whether they think that's something that they would use. We think it is, but of course, we would like to hear from the farmers out there and gauge their interest in, in being able to rent, again, at a, at a small fee, a, an agricultural-grade lime spreader, so. Eric, do you want to come up and just?
Thank you, Commissioners, for having us. Again, my name's Eric Johnson, and as Jerry said, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the no-til program or under the bigger umbrella of the Soil Health Program that we have in Lackawanna County. This program was developed and is something that we feel very strongly about here in Lackawanna County that can make a big difference on not only our local water quality here, but also water quality in the Chesapeake Bay watershed, which we are all a part of. The Soil Health Program encompasses education, which is the largest part of my job, is to educate the farming community. Those are the future in agriculture, those are the future in environmental, on the values of good soil health as it contributes to water quality, to environmental quality as a whole. The no-til equipment rental program, like Jerry mentioned, is a big cornerstone of that Soil Health Program. In addition to the education, this piece of equipment gives us the ability to offer a service that most of these farmers just would be without. These pieces of equipment cost anywhere between $25,000 and $30,000 each, so for every farmer in Lackawanna County and even in surrounding counties, to be able to go out, purchase limited disturbance no-til cedar for use on their farm would just be economically unrealistic. So by purchasing this, by renting it out to landowners, whether they're planting one acre or 100 acres, to not disturb their soils, so that it's not going to run off into our local creeks, our local lakes, wetlands, streams, and into the Chesapeake Bay, we can rent it out from the smallest to the largest farmer without them having the economic investment in it, and we can return not only the environmental benefits, but also the economic benefits back to our farming community. As Jerry said, we did purchase a new machine. Our machine gets a lot of road miles, because we tow it from Daleville all the way up to Benton Township, Fleetville area, so it gets covered a lot of miles every year and gets a lot of acres planted. So through Chesapeake Bay grant funding, we were actually able to purchase a new machine through that grant and the sale of our old equipment, we were actually able to get this at no cost to Lackawanna County, no cost to the Conservation District, to then offer as a service to our farmers. Because we feel so strongly about it, because we care about our farming community, we've actually lowered the rental fees this year,
That's right, yeah, that's what I can't wait to announce.
Which is abnormal, we're buying new equipment and lowering fees at the same time. So for operators that want to use this equipment, it will only cost them about $15 per acre. Another big thing we promote is cover crops, which would be after corn, soybean, any kind of cash crop. When they take that off, that soil just sits there completely fallow all winter long, into the early spring now, this time of year, and has really high potential to run off. So if they plant cover crops, which would put something growing there, living cover, living roots, to hold that soil in place, hold those nutrients in place, we actually give a bigger discount of $10 an acre for those operators. So, a really good program. This program not only is self-sustaining, but it is a piece of the puzzle that gets us out onto a farm to do a lot more conservation work, to protect the waters of the Commonwealth, the waters of Lackawanna County. So it's something we're really proud of, something that we definitely love the opportunity to promote. Thank you, Commissioner, for having us down here today.
You're welcome.
If you have any questions for us, we'd love to answer them and love to give anyone more information on how to use it, what it is. I know I didn't touch on a lot of the technology here today, but limited disturbance, planting of anything from a grass seed to a soybean for agricultural uses is a powerful tool and something we can really use to our advantage here.
Yeah, and this was something that I had talked to when I first joined the Conservation Board, is the cover crop, because I didn't know what that was.
Yeah.
So can you just expand on what executive, was it always grass, or you're saying something else they can plant?
Some of the most cover, common cover crops, excuse me. A cover crop really is a loose term for anything that's used in the interim period after harvest of a cash crop until the planting of the next year's cash crop. A lot of times, it is a grass, just because they're quick and easy to establish, and generally, our growing season culminates in the fall, September, October, so you really need something that comes up quickly, puts a lot of roots in and a lot of growth on top before winter comes and everything shuts down. So yes, commonly, it is grasses like rye, wheat, stuff like that, grains and grasses that we're going to plant. The biggest thing, we've done mixes of them, too, with up to 10 species of different plants that are all going to work in the soil in a different way, whether it be holding the soil in place, contributing nitrogen back that it takes out of the atmosphere. But the most common ones, yes, would be grasses, and we plant them for the biggest purpose of controlling erosion. Any nutrients that a farmer spreads on there, whether it be through manure or fertilizer, can get taken up by that crop and actually held in place instead of just running off down into our local streams, so.
And then do they rip that up in the, in the spring?
Yeah, in the spring, they have two choices with it. They can either, some farmers will spray it with some kind of an herbicide to kill that plant that's there currently, and then it will release its nutrients as it dies back to whatever you plant after that. Or if they don't want to use spray, as a lot of farmers do, an organic method, they would take that material and either roll it down to terminate that crop, or they might lightly till it in for the purpose of getting that organic matter back into the soil and releasing those nutrients. So it's a good tool, it's going to economically benefit the farmers, too, because they're getting some kind of a value, whether it be for fertilizer value or for holding their soil in place at a time of year that ultimately they wouldn't, because there's no cash crop growing, so.
Great, thank you. And I think, you know, I, see, the people on the Conservation Board, they don't like to brag about the work that they do, they just, they just do what they do, and, and nobody knows, notices all the good work that they're doing up there. And I'm making them come on camera all the time and talk about everything that we're doing, because I believe that they're doing a great job, I really do. And I'm not, and anybody that knows me knows I'm not an environmentalist at all, at all. I didn't recognize all the things that you, you all did. So with that said, Jerry is, you know, our director, and we had a meeting, we have a meeting once a month, and it's every Thursday, every third Thursday, correct? We were meeting?
Fourth.
Fourth, sorry. And we, as a board, have decided that we were going to vote to lower the cost to the farmers because of the good work that Eric has done in getting us grants for this equipment. So that's why I wanted to make sure that I had brought them in for this particular reason, and talk about how, as a board, we have effectively lowered some costs to our farmers locally, and you should be proud of that work. And, and I am proud to have voted on that decrease to the farmers and make that motion, and thank you for the opportunity. And Jerry, anything else you'd like to say about all that?
No, I'd just like to thank you for your continued support of the Conservation District. And also, if anyone needs to getting, get in touch with us, our phone number is 570-382-3086, whether they want to call about the cedar or the potential lime spreader that I discussed.
Could you just tell them what their, what their costs now are for, what do we go down to on the
It's $15 per acre to use the no-til cedar, unless it is a cover crop.
Right.
Then it is $10 per acre.
Okay, all right, great.
Good job, Jerry.
Thank you so much, so proud of you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioners, for your We didn't coordinate our shirts, by the way.
Oh, by the way, I really appreciate this gift.
Put that away.
That's for you, too.
Should have worked my eyes shut.
Oh, maybe it's for you, Andy.
Oh, no.
It, it hurts your ears, so I can't try, I try it out, but, boy, that thing's loud. I'm just teasing you, Andy, you do a great job. He does.
That's on tape, it's a serving nose, okay.
Watch it. This hurts your ears.
Okay, ordinance, second reading, 18-0110.
This is what's known as the Lackawanna County Fair and Recreation Authority. This is ordinance number 253 of the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna. This is the second and final reading. The first reading was held on March 21st, 2018, second reading and, and hopefully adoption today on May 16th, 2018. An ordinance signifying the intent of the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna to organize and incorporate a municipal authority pursuant to the Municipal Authorities Act of 1945, 53 Pennsylvania CSA statute to be known as the Lackawanna County Fair and Recreation Authority, authorizing and directing execution of the Articles of incorporation in a forum herein contained, directing notice of this ordinance to be published, directing that a public hearing be conducted prior to adoption of this ordinance, directing said articles and proof of such notice to be filed with the Secretary of the Commonwealth, designating the purposes for said authority, appointing the first members of the Board of the Authority, fixing their terms of office, and authorizing and taking all such actions as may be necessary and appropriate to organize said authority. That's a summary of the ordinance as directed by Solicitor Fredrickson that I should read.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll give you a second on that, and I'm looking forward to the fair. I can't wait to see if it works out, because, you know, it's always a good thing to be able to give the community something that is recreational and brings everybody to come together in a positive way instead of always a negative way. So I, I supported Commissioner O'Malley and his
After they vote for it, I couldn't
It was his idea to put this fair together, it was something he campaigned on, and, you know, I think that it was a good idea, and I'll support you in that.
Commissioner O'Malley, on the question, I'd like
I do apologize, but I was directed by the solicitors to read the authority members. I was going to read them after the adoption, but they said the proper time is to do it now, because it's part of the ordinance, so.
You guys can call to the podium anyway.
Shall I read them now?
Yeah, go ahead. They're going to say a few words.
This is the Articles of incorporation, naming the authority board members for the The board members are as follows, Mr. Armand Olivetti, Taylor, Pennsylvania, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2022. Mr. Kurt Camoni, Jessup, Pennsylvania, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2022. Mr. Jim Rodway, Peckville, Pennsylvania, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2022. Mr. Corey Seuss, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2021. Attorney Don Fredrickson, Music, Pennsylvania, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2021. Mr. Dominic Perini, Jessup, Pennsylvania, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2020. Sherry Pritchett, Scott Township, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2020. Mr. Kevin Shaughnessy, Scranton, Pennsylvania, term to begin immediately, expire on December 31st, 2019. Mr. William Cockrell, Dunmore, Pennsylvania, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2019.
Kurt, let's talk about the fair.
Absolutely.
Director of the Visitor Center, what does this mean to our community? What does it mean to the mountain? What does it mean to Lackawanna County?
Well, as, as the Executive Director of the Visitors Bureau, I feel very strongly that this fair can be a driver of tourism into the area and have a nice economic impact for our local restaurants, showcase our local heritage, and bring folks in and fill our hotels. I believe even in the early stages, in its first year, we can get the local community to support it and start building it organically into a much larger event that can be that huge economic and tourism driver. As a member of the committee, and I'm here today with Don Perini and Sherry Pritchett representing our, our committee, we're excited and appreciate this vote, so that we can go from the planning stages into an active authority and, and start doing the work that is necessary to get this turned around and have a very successful county fair. I commend the Commissioners in giving us the latitude that you have as a committee to plan it. For the people that you've put in place, I've been extremely impressed with the members of the committee and the expertises they have in all aspects of this. You know, when you're dealing with something this large, you need people with diverse expertise, and, and that's exactly what, what we have on the committee. And I'm very much looking forward to it as well, Commissioner. I think it's a great thing for the community, I think it's going to be a great event to be able to bring your children to. What we're concentrating right now on is the heritage portion of the fair and really trying to do what, as the Executive Director of the Visitors Bureau, I feel Lackawanna County does best. We celebrate our culture, our history, and our heritage, and that's exactly what this is going to showcase. And we're going out and contacting, we want the local churches, the local firehouses, to showcase what they have, and, and then also the restaurants and, and the folks around that build up a lot of these smaller events that we have in our towns, like St. Ubaldo or in Scranton, like the, the Festo or the Greek Festival, and really bring it all together into a showcase of everything that Lackawanna County has to offer.
Great. Mr. Perini, would you, I definitely have to have you come up and say a few words.
Excuse me. No, I'll, is it okay if I stay here?
You're not going to be, you have to give her the mic. Sorry about that.
Sure, why do you come up front, too, because you're going to speak, too?
Yeah, you're going to say a few words. There you are.
My name's Dominic Perini, and I'm honored and privileged to be a part of this board. I'm the general chairman of the picnic in Jessup that revolves around the St. Ubaldo Society Weekend. Everybody calls it the St. Ubaldo picnic, but it's actually run by the Jessup Fire Company. But we're honored and proud to be a part of this. Commissioners, you really did your homework in putting this together, as far as the people that sit on this. We have members that ran fairs, we have members that did entertainment, we have members that did, uh, uh, fairs, or not fairs, but we, we have members that did fairs. We have a county commissioner that was a part of a fair up in Wyoming, is it, Pat? Wyoming County he was involved in? So the, like Mr. Camoni said, the broad array of, Sherry is a great fundraiser, I mean, she, she does purse bingos, and she just does a lot of things that earn money. And this is going to be funded totally self-contained, no public money. We're going to go out and do this all by ourself, not asking Commissioners for any money, except your support and your oversight, that we do the right thing for Lackawanna County. And it's, it, Pat, I don't know if this was your flair to begin with, I know you ran on it, but bravo. I mean, to put this together had to be a great challenge and had to be a great opportunity. And like, you know, having Kurt this is going to be funded totally self-contained, no public money. We're going to go out and do this all by ourselves, not asking commissioners for any money except your support and your oversight that we do the right thing for Lackawanna County. And it's a -- Pat, I don't know if this was your flair to begin with. I know you ran on it, but bravo. I mean, to put this together had to be a great challenge and had to be a great opportunity. And like, you know, having Kurt on board with his involvement with the Visitors Bureau, it's just a home run. Everything's a home run.
Thanks, Tom. Sherry, you'd like to say a few words? Come on, Sherry.
That's okay.
Commissioner Cummings, let's say a few words.
Well, I mean, I just, like I said, I support Commissioner O'Malley and his idea. I think it's a good idea, and, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing how it turns out, especially a heritage fair. I wasn't, I didn't recognize until we were doing all this, the different types of fairs that you can only, you were only allowed to have. And when you chose the heritage aspect, as you can see with the businesses that I have coming in, I love their stories, and I always like to hear about their past and how they got where they're at. And to have all of those types of people in one area to promote Lackawanna County, you're right, it's a home run. I can't even imagine a better idea to have all of the things that go on in our county displayed for people to come in and see. So thank you for the work you're doing, and --
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thanks.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
I think the heritage part of it is a very important part of it, and I think the timing of it is something that's going to be really helpful. It's not too early. It's certainly not too late. It doesn't interfere with the rural county fairs. I think it's a good thing, and let's hope it works out. Okay? Good luck with everything. Thank you, guys.
I've been waiting for this for a long time. I would think about this since 2013, and we brought it to the Commissioners in fourteen and moved forward and forward and forward, and here we are next year. May twenty-ninth through June second, 2019, we're going to have the fair up on Montage Mountain where great things happen. The inaugural Lackawanna County Heritage Fair, you know, great economic impact, family memories, first fair, I think, out of the gate. Am I right for the season?
Yes, sir.
Why not Lackawanna County? Wayne has one. Luzerne had two. Hartford, all the counties surrounding us have fairs. Why not Lackawanna County? And I just, I'm just so happy because I think this is going to be tremendous. It's another great event to add to the calendar of great events in Lackawanna County. It's going to showcase Lackawanna County. It's going to show all the great opportunities. It's a great place to go on vacation. It's a great time for your family, and nowhere better than to have it on the mountain. We have great partners. We've got the Rail Riders involved. We've got Live Nations. We have Montage Mountain Ski Resort and Slide Park, the Visitor Center, and so many other people, so many other people. Now, do we have a phone number if there's anybody in the viewing audience that would like to become? Because we're looking for people to help out with this event, and I know you need them right off the bat.
Now that we're taking this next step today, and again, we do appreciate your support in that, we are looking for volunteers to help the committee. We're also, any vendors that are interested in having a place to show their wares or sell their food at the fair, or anybody that's looking to donate to what will be a great economic driver to Lackawanna County. We have a phone number and an email address. The phone number is (570) 468-8619, and we are in the process of building out a website that you'll be able to go to, but temporarily, the email address will be countyfair@visitnepa.org.
So we're looking for all the volunteers you can get.
We will take all the help that we can get. We have a solid outline, a solid plan. It's just going to take hard work to get it done, and that's what we do best in Lackawanna County.
Before we do the vote, I just want to thank a few people. I want to thank the board itself. Some of our members, for some reason, the way the authority is set up, there was going to be two other members that were going to be on the board, but since they're outside of our county. Can you give me the legal background on that? They're not allowed to be on the authority themselves?
That's correct, Commissioner. The Authorities Act requires that the members of the board reside within the municipality establishing the authority. In this case, it's Lackawanna County, so the members of the authority have to serve, have to live within Lackawanna County.
And that would be Commissioner Ron Williams, and that would have been, I think, Joe Polup from --
Joe Poopa from Luzerne County.
Joe Poopa from Luzerne County. And we'd like for them to be in board because there's going to be an advisory board, I think, to this.
Yes, sir.
And, I mean, everybody brings something to the table, but I'd like to name all the people who were part of the board that brought it to a point where we found out that we could actually do it. First and foremost, Armond Olivetti, be chair in it, making sure that we do everything that we need to do. Chris DiMaggio, Italian Festival. Corey Sues, Donna Gray, Dominic Perini. You know Dominic Perini's background. It's a pleasure to have him here. Jess Mino, Jimmy Rodway, Mark Guyen, Mike Toledo, Robert Noldy, Ron Williams. Sherry Pritchett is going to start raising us money. We've got to get ready for this big event. And Terry Scatini. These are all people who are part of the original board, and we'd very, we'd like to have them be involved. A lot of them did not want to be part of the authority, and the reason and rationale for the authority is the separation of --
Well, it's a separate quasi-governmental agency, Commissioner, and it's not under direct control of the county, except for the appointment of the board. It's able to raise its own funds and conduct its own business outside the county.
So any debts or anything like that?
That's correct. Not associated with the county directly. Correct.
So we wanted to make sure that we had that layer of protection for our 214,000 citizens. But thank you for stepping up the plate. Thank you for your time. Thank you for going out of town to the different events, the different, different --
Conferences.
Conferences that you went to, because there was a lot to this. It just didn't, it just didn't just happen. There was a lot of work. Thank you very much. And at this time, I'd like to ask for roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck, and we're here for anything that you need.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kurt. Thank you very much for your help with the Jimmy Reddington event and all your help with the --
It's been very fun to have a part of all three of these boards that are here. I've partnered with Kappa. It's wonderful.
Kurt, only one paycheck, only one paycheck.
I won't say this in front of fam, but you don't even have to pay, ma'am. I'm having a blast.
Thank you, everyone. Congratulations. Thank you.
Kurt has done a great job at the Visitors Bureau for us.
Yes, he has. He's done a great job. Tremendous.
I want to do one other question because they have their opponent speaking.
Okay, eighteen dash zero one one six.
We're going to start the formal portion of our meeting. Approving current payables, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby approves the following payables from the Lackawanna County General Fund. Number is two six two five seven seven through two six three three nine eight inclusive, totaling three million, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-four cents. Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling five million, six hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars and sixteen cents. And our Controller, Mr. DeBilio, is here if there are any questions.
Do you have everything up to par?
Yes, Commissioners, all payables are in order and have been audited and approved.
Okay. Under payables, or do we have to vote on that first, I guess?
No, you can kind of ask.
I had, there had been questions in regards to payments to legal fees, so I had received another update in regards to legal fees that are spent specifically on the prisons. So I just wanted to, do you want to take a look at this before I discuss this, or did you already look at this?
Yeah, I do know, Commissioners, there are no legal bills on here regarding the prison raid with the Attorney General's Office.
She's looking at the cumulative to date, Mr. Controller. From October through March, she has a cumulative figure that she wants.
I got this breakdown from our Chief Financial Officer, Tom Durkin, and I know that our Chief of Staff went over it with us as well, right?
That's correct.
Do you have a copy of it?
I don't have it in front of me. I believe the total's three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. If I'm not mistaken, I don't have it in front of me.
But none of that is on this current --
None of it's on this current payables.
Nothing's on here.
I mean, if you want to vote now, I can talk about it. That's fine.
I don't have the totals in front of me right now.
Okay. It was just somebody had questioned it, and I wanted to make sure I had the numbers here if they were here.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion approving current payables. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Yes.
And can I just review that real quick with the public, or no? Is that on the question? Okay. So, as Chief Staff said, there's three hundred and ninety-six, what is that, three?
Three hundred and ninety-six thousand. I don't have the paper in front of me. I believe it's, was the total to date?
Something we can talk about.
Yeah, we're budgeted. I asked our Chief Financial Officer what we're budgeted for on a yearly basis. It's six hundred and eight thousand that we're budgeted for. So right now, we're at three hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-five cents.
Commissioner, I do have to point out that a portion of that was charged to our 2018 budget and a portion of it to our 2019 budget. So we're okay on it because I believe half of it was charged to last year's budget. So we're still on target for this year.
I had asked that, and he said no. So I guess you got a different answer. So maybe we can clarify that with --
That was the answer I received.
Okay. I had questioned him, too, on that, so. The costs associated with it, I did have to ask, I have to talk to you about it, John, because there's some people I didn't know that were hired, and --
I received that information from Kevin Mitchell, our Budget Director.
Yeah. I didn't know until later on, so. The way that works is that you guys hire them. Is that it? Can you explain? Because we didn't know.
I'll let you know on that, Commissioner. Originally, again, when this whole thing came across, DeGaulle was here to protect confidential information and to assist in terms of this investigation, and as a result thereof, we hired Myers, Breyer, and Kelly. And I would indicate that I have talked to them, and it's their opinions that we're getting to the end of this. They've indicated to me out of the thirteen million emails that they've pretty much supplied everything the AG's office was looking for. In addition to that, as part of their being the coordinators of this whole process, there were individuals that were going to be called before the grand jury, and the thought was their employees of ours, they should have some representation. Their feeling was, to put this totally above board, let's not use lawyers from Lackawanna County because we didn't want to create an issue in terms of appearances. So they selected, these are lawyers with expertise, these are lawyers that have done this before. I don't know these lawyers, okay? It just seemed like the appropriate way to handle this matter. They've indicated to me that they're not aware, I think we're at the end of costs. I can't say that because it's an Attorney General's investigation, but they've sort of indicated to me that that's what they believe. That's where these lawyers came from. And I did have discussions with your solicitor as to, here's the process. I thought it was a good idea. I mean, they're here in Lackawanna County, and all of a sudden, you're using Lackawanna County. And people had a choice on who they can use. We didn't tell them who to use.
Okay.
They could have gone to their own lawyers, and some of them did.
They requested help from us.
Right. If they requested help from us, it was offered to them, okay? They didn't even have to select these lawyers. They could have selected their own. We didn't dictate who the lawyers, we didn't tell them who they could choose. That was entirely up to them. We just presented, here's a list of lawyers that have dealt with this before. If you have an interest, call them up. That was the end of my involvement. Their representation of all these people terminated if any charges were filed against them.
Okay.
Okay? That's how that whole process speaks.
I appreciate that because I'm getting a lot of questions on what exactly is this money going towards, and as you saw, they came in and asked for the breakdowns and --
I mean, listen.
It's a lot of money, yeah.
And it's just, I'm hoping we're near --
Near the end. Yeah. I just want to make sure that I'm answering what the questions were, and I appreciate you answering those for the public. Thank you.
Okay, eighteen dash zero one zero nine.
Approving a providers agreement with the Office of Drug and Alcohol Abuse. Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby approves the provider agreement listed for Department of Human Services, Lackawanna, Susquehanna, Office of Drug and Alcohol Programs for fiscal year July one, 2018 through June thirtieth, 2019. Barb Durkin, our Director of Drug and Alcohol, will be here and will explain these agreements and what companies we're using.
Morning, Barb.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for the time. As mentioned, I'm requesting your support of our 2018, 2019 provider contracts. As you're aware, we are, my office is a joiner with Susquehanna County, so some of the providers that are on the list are applicable solely to Susquehanna County residents. And then if we have individuals who are in need of a specialized service, we will send them to any of the providers that are listed here. In addition, should the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County support our eighteen, nineteen contracts, we will need to send them to the Susquehanna County Commissioners for their signature as well. The contract, or the providers that are listed on the four-page document that I believe you have in front of you are standard. We've made a couple of additions to the providers for eighteen, nineteen to address some of the needs we're experiencing with the opioid crisis here in Lackawanna County, and then some other services we're looking to provide for Susquehanna County. We're looking to expand some of the certified recovery support work that we're doing through the Recovery Oriented Systems of Care Initiative. We're going to add some additional resources to our outpatient providers to compensate them for those services. We're also looking to expand some of the medication-assisted treatment providers that we're contracting with, and we're looking specifically for providers who will do the medication as well as the treatment all in one place so that we can ensure that everyone's getting the actual treatment that they need. That is, you know, what we're asking for. Are there any questions from any --
Given those guidelines, though, right? Because, I mean, I would want to know what, because I had met with the Wright Center and all the different docs, and they're not supporting that for a long-term basis. So are we going to have a limit on what we would support? Like, we won't want people on Suboxone for three years, in other words, because they guarantee me that is not what they're doing, so.
Correct. So the Department of Drug and Alcohol at the state sets the guidelines that we would then follow, and then we can implement our own more stringent guidelines, and that's what we have done. Commissioner, I'd be happy to share with you what our medication-assisted treatment policy is with the providers, and that will give you an understanding of what we're looking to do.
Yeah, I read it, and I went over it with them to make sure, yeah, because I just want to make sure that we were on the same page, but thank you.
Absolutely.
Because, well, that's just what I do.
Absolutely. I appreciate that.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion approving providers for the Office of Drug and Alcohol. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes. Sorry. I was reading.
Yes. Thanks, Barb.
Thank you so much. Barb, can you hang out for a little bit?
Eighteen dash zero one one three.
Approving a local economic revitalization tax assistance for the Borough of Taylor, and this is, I'm going to read a summary of this as directed by the solicitors, providing for property tax exemption for certain deteriorated industrial, commercial, and other business properties, defining eligible deteriorated areas, setting a maximum exemption amount, exemption schedule, and providing procedure for securing the exemption. Mr. George Kelly, our Director of Economic and Community Development, is here to explain the agreement, and prior to that, I'm going to ask Mr. Don Fredrickson just to brief you briefly on the process on this, since it regarded making one change.
Okay. Good morning, George.
Good morning, Commissioners. Don, while you were talking to Barb, Chief Wallace asked you to comment on the process.
No problem. I wasn't sure if you wanted to go first or me, but that's --
I'd love to go first.
The resolution authorizing this letter was approved by the Borough of Taylor and Riverside School District prior to us. Policy is, we usually adopt it last, because we usually have the least amount of skin in the game with regard to the taxes, okay? School District being the largest. We adopted the resolution mimicking the language in the school district. There was a difference between the language in the school district and the language in the Taylor Borough as to when the letter would start. Taylor is going to amend their ordinance, though, to reflect the same language as in the school district and our language going forward. So, we're going to approve it today with the school district language in Taylor Borough. We're going to amend their ordinance going forward.
Because they've already approved it, but they're going to go over it and re-prove it.
Yeah, and it's just a matter of when the letter starts. Everything else is the same, though. The period is the same, nothing else has changed, the percentages are all the same.
Okay. Does the Board have any questions?
I'd also like to point out that Mr. Ron Kaljewski, the former Director of our Tax Claim Bureau, was good enough to review this and point out the inconsistency, and I thank him for doing that.
Yes, thanks.
Okay.
Just to give you a little more background on it, this is a $5 million project, and it's going to be a 20,000-square-foot building, 10 acres of land, considerable investment into Taylor. All three tax entities are on board. And as Solicitor Frederickson mentioned, it's a major difference with the Borough. We all have it that they have to get occupancy permit, at least two of the three, the school and us, have it that they have to get occupancy permit by August 14, 2019, or else they don't get a letter. The Borough just gave them the option of, one year after the occupancy permit is issued to start getting the payment, or it can be up to three years after they get the building permit if there isn't an occupancy permit issued, which would make it null and void for our standpoints, because if they don't get a permit, or get the permit by August of 2019, they don't get the letter.
Okay. There's a lot of work going on right now. There's a lot of stuff going on.
What are they doing? What are they building?
It's a car auction. It's an automobile auction.
Oh, okay.
So, it's a gone auction.
Needed a lot of work last year. Okay, I'd like to make a motion approving the Local Economic Revitalization Assistant Act for Taylor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terri, yes.
Yes.
Yes, thanks, George. 18-0114.
This is a co-promotion agreement with Entercom. Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby enters into a co-promotion agreement with Entercom LLC, the city of Scranton, and Scranton tomorrow. With respect to Lackawanna County Presents, the Lackawanna County Scrantastic Spectacular Event on July 3, 2018, at the Lackawanna County Courthouse. And Maureen McWiggin, our Director of Arts and Cultural Affairs, is here to answer any questions in regard to this agreement.
Good morning, Commissioners.
This, we started this a few years ago.
Because it's a big project downtown on July 3 that involves several partners, it's just to protect all parties and outline the different roles and responsibilities, and go over some liability issues. So, this is a pretty standard. We've done this probably for the past three or four years.
Okay, Solicitors, everything's good? Good? Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Why do we always have to have it in Scranton? And that's not negative to you at all, at all. I'm just asking, why do we always have to have it in Scranton?
Because I think, probably because our courthouse is here, it's...
No, no, it's a good question, Commissioner. I agree with you. I'd like to spread the wealth. I think Scranton being the seat of the county, beautiful courthouse backdrop, it can accommodate, we get upwards of 10,000 people, you know? It used, a long time ago, it was at the stadium, but that, when they wanted to move it, we brought it downtown.
No, it was actually, it was at Scranton Stadium, I forgot about that.
And I think people like, it has a very beautiful hometown kind of feel. Certainly, you're right, there's many beautiful places in Lackawanna County. I think, I think it just makes the most sense for this type of event. I certainly understand, we're always, like, I've talked up here before about trying to get other events around the county, but I think this one seemed to be more of a natural fit for our downtown.
Well, being the only Commissioner not from Scranton, I just feel that we start, we should look at these big events that bring 10,000 people in. I mean, what about the city of Carbondale? I don't know if they'd want it or not. I'm just saying, like, if somebody else wanted it, how would they be able to ask us to do this? Would they be able to ask us?
We also have three other partners on the event, so I don't think that's a decision we could make alone, just because other people, so, I'm sure they could approach it, and it could be considered. We're always open to suggestions. We never shut things down before we hear people out, so.
The other thing, this is...
They could contact me if they, if they want to.
This is me in Pro Scranton, but just so you know, there's a lot of logistical stuff with it. You know, the fireworks, where it's going to be set off, the buildings and stuff.
That's why I said, I think Scranton is set up for it. That's not, believe me, there's some logistical challenges, too, but it's worked. Like I said, other partners have decided that. We're always open to suggestions, though. I don't know if that helps answer the question.
Well, I'm, is this a county, this is a county event, right? No? It's a couple of people?
We are the largest supporter, hence, we call it Lackawanna County Presents, Scrantastic Spectacular. But Entercom Communications also puts funding and a lot of resources. They actually coordinate all of the events happening around the square. The vendors and the smaller stage. Scranton tomorrow, because the county cannot legally operate the, we cannot set off and pay for fireworks, they handle that portion. So, it's, it's a multifaceted partnership, and it's, it's been going on for several years, so we kind of all come together, and we each kind of take a piece, but...
Thank you, I just asked a question.
No, no, I know, it's confusing. No, no, I just wanted for the public as well, why we're signing this agreement, because there's, there's four different people involved.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay, I'll make, I'd like to make a motion entering into a co-promotion agreement with Entercom. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terri, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thanks, Maureen.
Thanks, Maureen.
Okay, 18-0115.
This is entering into area agency on aging agreements. Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby enters into an agreement on behalf of the area agency on aging with the Greenhouse Project 200 Arthur Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, for health and wellness program for seniors, subject to availability of state and federal funds. The term of this agreement shall be June 1, 2018, through November 30, 2018. And Jason Kevulich, our Director of Area Agency on Aging, is here to answer any questions we might have on this agreement.
Good morning, Jason.
Good morning. This is an initial project that we're doing with the Greenhouse at NaOG. We are obligated under the Department of Aging to provide new activities for older adults in our community. So, this pilot project will involve free scholarships for older adults at the Greenhouse to do multiple classes at two different periods of time, over the June to August period and the August to November period. So, it's a pilot program, it's new, it's a little bit innovative. It's getting older adults out of their homes and doing healthy activities in order to promote health and socialization for them.
Does the Board have any questions? Okay. I'd like to make a motion entering into, into an area agency in aging agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'd just like to say, I think that this is, can be great. It's going to give the seniors an opportunity to learn how, I'm sure a lot of them know how to garden, but it's going to enrich them, it's going to give them something to do, and it's, I think it's just going to be a great opportunity for all of them, actually. It's going to be great. Something extra to add on to their day if they have time.
We're hoping and promote a new healthy living style, and getting them out, getting them walking in the community.
Absolutely, moving around.
Yes.
Putting your hands in the soil, nice. I think it's pretty good. Roll call.
Commissioner Terri, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Make sure you get what Frank about it, Jason. Okay, opportunity for the public to address the Board.
Bob Ballas, Scranton. I'd like to set the record straight. Last meeting here, I think Commissioner Cummings misinterpreted my meaning when I was talking about veterans and different things.
I did, and I apologize for that, Bob, sorry.
Oh, that's okay, but I want to set it clear that I believe the Commissioners have been tremendously responsive, including Pat, who sat here when I brought Dr. George Lindenfeld up here on the PTSD, and took the time to do what we were doing. And we've been involved, trying to still come up with a program that's going to take care of our vets. So, I just wanted to clear that up. It wasn't brought on by me in any way, shape, or form to be negative, especially when it comes to our vets. And I definitely, if I did, I'll always take the criticism. Might give it back a little, but I'll still take it. Watching what's going on, you know, in the county here. We saw our nurses go on strike over here. I've criticized the Scranton City Council over it, that I felt that some of the council members should have actually came out in support, not worry about sending letters to administrators, that we all know they go on the shredder, they mean nothing. But I think in the future, if we have an issue where regard, our nurses and stuff, because they're our first line of defense in a hospital, and I have a tremendous amount of respect for them. My mom had been a nurse for over 30 years at the Mercy Hospital, and with her, her family came first, and her patients were right behind it. There was no such thing as it's snowing, or I can't do this and we can't do that. There was never a time, and that's when they had the starched white uniforms and the caps and all. And to see our nurses get discredited and have to go out on a strike by companies coming into our area, are not serving us, the people. We're the ones that are paying their bills. We're the ones going in there as patients. Our insurance is paying and all that, and they should have competent, well-qualified individuals there. So, it's just one of the issues, I think, in the future, if they do go on a strike, we all need to come out and support our people and let businesses know, the business is taking care of the people, not just how your bottom line is. So, I'd like to put that back. This weekend, or yesterday, we had a great election. I think we got some tremendous candidates now. I'm very happy, as a Republican, on the Republican side, the people that we got going forward. I had supported Joe Peters in the election, but Joe graciously is now going to stand and support the candidate, John Sharon. And I think our people that we have, we're going to have people that are going to be in the best interest, whether it's Democrat or Republican, for what's going to happen for this county and for our state. So, I think we're fortunate to be in that situation. The parade we're going to have, we're going to honor our vets. As you know, I've been on the PTSD mission, and I'm not going to stop. I've been on my mission to Iwo Jima to recover the remains of the Marine who filled in the flag raising on Surrabachi, and the Commissioners have named the day after Sergeant William Ginnost here in Lackawanna County. And his family in Effingham, Illinois couldn't be prouder to know that he has a place in history, right here in Lackawanna County, and I want to thank you for doing that, and that's from his family. You know, we see one thing here, and one of the sad things are, we have vets that called for help, no one heard them. They committed suicide. It's a nasty word, but that's what happens. Hear them now, as their coffin passes. And why? Because we stood idly by, we forgot who they were, when they came home, took off a uniform, came back into society with the issues that confronted them through their lives. So, those are the things that are near and dear to me, is our vets, the people I was with, and all, to really bring attention to it, and make it one of our primary issues, one of our primary functions, to give them the help. I don't want to see another coffin, and I don't want another, visit another grave, when we could have did something. So, that's one of the issues I had going on there. Thought maybe I'd let the Commissioners think about something. I have the old sports dome up in Jessup, 80,000-square-foot of playing field that's in perfect condition yet. At some point, I'd like to sit down with the Commissioners and possibly figure out either a sale to the county, or a lease to the county that's open to everybody in the county to use, other than worrying about what the university has or other issues and other fields to go play in. It's a heck of an asset, and it's in Jessup. So, I wanted to put that out there, and just see how we could do that. Also, the last thing I want to do, it was nice to see the sidewalks getting fixed out here. It was a pleasure to see them and not trip in them. But I had a crazy thought, and I don't know how we look at something, if we took the fare, it's a hell of an idea, and I think it's going to be a tremendous asset to our county to bring more attention to what we're doing, and it shows our progress, and progress that we're going in the right direction. If we took, say, on a ticket, and we put a 50-cent fee on that ticket, or a dollar fee, and put that toward a fund for vets, where that money would go into an account, where nobody takes it out, in salary or otherwise, and it's used solely for the treatment, the funding of the studies we need for PTSD, and I think that might be something to do. And I don't think anybody would want to turn their back on it and say, no, we're not interested in doing that. And it's a way that we could raise the money without looking for grants and begging money from somewhere there or here. We could do that, because if we all contribute a dollar, we're contributing to the people who gave them the freedom for us to stand here today, to honor that flag that's behind us, and to honor our people on Saturday. So, I'd like you to give it some thought along that line, and then we're not begging anybody for money, we're just letting everybody pay back the respect that they should have given our people. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
That's a great idea, Bob, yeah.
That's a good idea.
Joan Hodwana, it's 220 Linden Street, Scranton. With regard to the legal fees, the $396,000 cumulative total, is that just with regard to prison fees, or is that all legal fees for the county so far? That's just prison, right?
It's just prison fees.
Okay, and that's, that goes back into 2017?
That is correct.
Okay.
No, 2018, 2019.
17 and 18. 19 is next year.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm...
Earth to Andy, come in, Andy.
Okay.
Get your coffee. Somebody give him a cup of coffee.
Let me clarify that, Joan, because the total payments for services from October 17 to March 18, or, October 2017 to March 2018.
Okay, all right. The, I, did I understand correctly that the 2018 budgeted line item for legal fees was $600,000?
That's what I was told when I had requested this information. Now, since then, maybe there's a different response, maybe they looked into it further, so...
Okay. I'm curious, do we normally budget something like $600,000 a year for legal fees for the county?
Yes, that's what I was told, yes.
Okay, so, if we have other legal issues come up, perhaps somebody sues the county or whatever, we may still have a shortfall in that line item, because we've already used almost $400,000.
I'm not sure, because I, I think our insurance does carry some, some of the, we have deductibles. So, this would cover the deductibles that we got.
Okay, so, do we know of that 2018 line item, of the $600,000 budget, what we've actually expended to date?
Actually, Tom Durkett is not here, is he?
Yeah, he's not, but, okay.
They told me it's approximately half of it is attributed to this year.
Because there seems to be some...
Half was from last year.
My sensing...
Chief of Staff says approximately half of what the figure is.
My sensing is that the prison issue is one of the more unusual expenses that the county's facing.
It truly is, yeah, it truly is.
With regard to Stephanie Longo, and she's probably too modest to have said this, but Sunday, 2:00 PM, she would be doing a book signing at the Library Express, which is on the second floor of Marketplace at Steamtown. And so, I don't know why she said she didn't have any more books. There's a whole bunch of books down at the Library Express, for sale.
Okay, so, I told her I wanted to buy it.
Library, and, well, you should. I mean, there are some books that you would check out of the library, read and return, and there are other books that you want to have your personal copy.
Actually, that...
And I would think if you're Italian, this is one you'd want a personal copy. And anybody who's never been to the Library Express, that's a unique entity. It's both a library where you can borrow books and DVDs and CDs, and it's a bookstore where you can buy books, so, and there's a whole section in there...
That's on the second level of the mall?
Second level of the mall, okay, got to go there. There's a whole section with books on the ethnic heritage of Lackawanna County and Northeastern Pennsylvania.
I'm sorry, Joan, the only time I go, the only time I go to the mall to buy books is when you're selling them.
Well, when you go there, you do it about face, you go over to the Library Express, and take a look at the ethnic section. They've got books on Taylor, they've got a book on Old Forge, Lorraine.
What's that?
There's a book on Old Forge.
Where at?
In the Library Express.
Oh, Express, sorry.
Yeah, there's numerous books about our community out there.
I'm multitasking, sorry.
Yeah, there are books on Carbondale, there are books on Jessup. There's books on the Jewish community of Northeastern Pennsylvania, in addition to the Italians, a lot of books on Scranton, one on the Hill Section, one on Greenridge, and it goes on and on. On our coal mining heritage, all over Northeastern Pennsylvania, books on our railroad heritage. It's just one whole section, nothing but books on Lackawanna County and Northeastern Pennsylvania, so, it's a nice place to visit. So, when you come to the book sale between June 5 and June 10 of this year, we'll be there in front of the gym, you do an about-face, there's the Library Express, and you go on over and check it out.
Now, if you had to decide where we'd spend our money, where would it be?
The book sale, because it's only one or two dollars. But there are some things, like, we don't yet have a copy of Stephanie Longo's book, so you may want to go over there. I'm going to go over and get one. My mother was Italian. I want to get a copy. So, just be aware that that's happening. So, just be aware that that's happening. Now, you may notice that I have my Swinging on Vine tee shirt on, and here are your informal invitations. Pass those down. Thank you.
Thanks, Joan.
Friday, May 25th, 5 to 8:00 PM, right in front of the library, corner of Vine and North Washington. It's our ninth annual fundraiser for the library, Swinging on Vine, okay? We're celebrating 125 years of the Albright Memorial Library. Now, you see the little picture in there? That's the live entertainment. You would never guess that they go by the name Picture Perfect and the Raging Hormones, because they look like a very sedate group of musicians.
Picture Perfect is, is that the same one that I'm?
Yeah, take a look at the picture, that's close to that. It says Picture Perfect and the Raging Hormones. But, they don't look like a very bizarre rock band. This, this is an adult-only event, okay? Because there will be beer, wine and margaritas, a lot of local food donated by a lot of our local restaurants in Lackawanna College. Inside the library, which will be open, the whole first floor will be nothing but desserts.
Nice.
And chocolate is the specialty. So, it's $20 in advance, $25 at the door, and if you have little carpet commandos or ankle biters or rug rats, get your babysitters lined up now, because you can't bring them to this event. I'll be there, everybody else will be there. Also. Pass those down. Thank you. Let it not be said in my hearing that there's nothing to do in Lackawanna County in the summertime for children. This is summer quest at the library, lots of things to see and do in Lackawanna County. You open it up, gives you, you know, some of the items, rocks and minerals at the Everhart Museum, railroads rock at the Steamtown National Historic Site, this is all for children, by the way, Rock On, Children's Day at Catlin House, which is Lackawanna Historical Society, Legally Blonde Junior at the Scranton Cultural Center. I have to confess, I don't, I've never saw Legally Blonde, so I don't know what that's all about. Rock with Miners at the Anthracite Heritage Museum, and Arts Engage Day at the Electric City Trolley Museum Station. And you look at the back cover, you see all the county facilities, which will be providing, you know, these, these attractions for our children. And read five books this summer and win a free ticket to a game at PNC Field on August 14th, which is library night. So, please, you know, let people know that there are constructive and rewarding and fun things to do in Lackawanna County, in which the library is the main player. Thank you.
Thanks, Joan.
Thanks, Joan.
Thank you. Anyone else?
May I share? May I take one quick bit if there was something I overlooked and I think it's important?
Go ahead, go ahead, absolutely.
I appreciate it. Last week, or at the last meeting, Commissioner Cummings was criticized by people in the paper and everything, ridiculed over marijuana and the drugs. I think it was totally, totally unfair that anybody would criticize any of our commissioners or people. Doctors out there don't even know the real effect of marijuana, and we're not experts. But, I'll tell you, the experts are those that know how to mix the chemicals and sell the drugs, or better chemists than anybody else out there that could do it. And quite frankly, the last thing I want to see is a driver in a truck, a bus, or a police officer, or somebody driving a fire truck, smoking a joint going down the road, because we legalize recreational marijuana. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
I'm gonna, I'll just wait for him to come back, maybe. No, I better not wait for him to come back, huh? I've got papers strewn about me, so I apologize, I'm trying to sift through everything here. So, I do, because I did my Google research, so, I have a lot of paperwork in front of From the past month, actually, this is just a small portion of the research I've been doing for the past month. I am a nurse, that does mean something, and it should be taken seriously. I do know what I'm talking about when I research something. This is not a funny subject, and I'm very, when I, when I see something that could potentially harm our community or our citizens, or especially our children and pets, I do get quite emotional and it upsets me. And it really upsets me when those people are sometimes, those people that are, that, we've seen through our city council last week how devastating it can be to a person when they're out searching for an answer to a diagnosis that has scared them to the point of, they know that there's, the ending isn't going to be that great. And to use the devastation that those type of people go through when they hear those diagnoses, and misinform them of possible treatments that have not even been scientifically studied through the FDA because of its class, its Schedule I classification, is an outrage to me. So, yes, I became quite irate over that fact. And my heart goes out to people like Councilmember Perry and Councilmember Evans. I, I, I want to clarify that I did not say ever that anybody that was looking for this as a treatment was stupid. What I said was, people that believe some of these reports coming out about opioids going down due to marijuana use were stupid. I'm gonna stand by that statement, because, yes, you can Google information, but that doesn't make it true. Everything on the internet is not true, I have to tell you, okay? You can Google, for instance, doctors say no to medical marijuana. And if you do, you get 8,030,000 results of why doctors are against medical marijuana. Do all, are all of these items that come up on Google correct? In their mind, they might be, but they're anecdotal. There's a difference between scientific proof and anecdotal proof, okay? And that's what I was referring to, and that's what I've stated to these Scranton Times every time they called for my information on this, that it was anecdotal information that is being provided to the public rather than scientific, fact-based information. Anecdotal information is, could be done with surveys. I'll give you, for instance, how many people went to the ER from the time that marijuana was passed in Colorado? How many times, they, they looked at how many children under the age of eight went to the ER? Well, I could sit here and try and make you believe what I'm saying and give you, show you something that says 15,000 kids went to the ER, but that doesn't mean that they all took medical marijuana. But, if I wanted to be a real controversial character, I could do that, but that would be my opinion. That's not, it's a fact that 15,000 went to the ER, but it's not a fact that that many had eaten medical marijuana. So, you have to be very careful when you're using anecdotal information, because it's in the opinion of the person handing it out. It's, it could be a survey, it could be multiple studies that were put together and then cherry-picked which ones were, were chosen to be applied to their opinion that they're discussing. So, that, that's the biggest problem, and that's when I say that there is no proof that there, there's no proof that this helps medically, other than with nausea, that I can find, because it's anecdotal in nature. So, I hope I clarified that for the viewing public, because not everybody that views the video reads the paper, and then I can actually thank Mark for your work, because I get to fix things that were broken in the reports when, when they are, so, thank you for that. And, you know, the reason that it has not been studied extensively is because it's classified by the FDA as a Schedule I drug, making it illegal for universities to just purchase marijuana. You know, it's, it's very difficult, you have to get the substance from the DEA, apparently. I don't even know the whole entire process, because I haven't gotten to that research yet, but I will. But, it's very difficult to, to be able to study the effects of marijuana. And, the other issue with studying this is getting a placebo in your study, because it's, it's, a placebo is, is a fake drug or substance that you use when, when you're providing a study, so that, like in other words, your child says to you, "I have a headache", and you don't want to give them, that, you know, that, or they have a fever, and you know that they don't have a fever, you took their temperature, but they insist they do. So, you give them a candy that they, and you call it an aspirin, and they believe you and then they feel better. That's kind of what a placebo in a real generic explanation to. So, you need that in order to do your study. And it's hard to give someone fake marijuana and make them think they're taking it, to try and see if it's going to affect them the same as regular marijuana would. So, that's another difficult part of it, and it's only for a psychological benefit to have the placebo, so, and I'm really putting it in layman's terms at the lowest level, so I'm trying not to make any mistakes for the written reports. So, you can imagine it's really hard to find that substance, to mimic the taste of marijuana or trick the subject into thinking it's the real thing. And, I just think it's, it's disingenuous and to misinform people to make an anecdotal study an actual fact when it's not. I don't agree with that. And, throughout the research that I'm doing, I'm finding that, that there's differences that the people aren't aware of in regards to marijuana, medical marijuana and recreational marijuana. And, I'd like to bring Barb Durkin up to explain to the public how this works now that these stores or these facilities where you can purchase them are now available to the public, which is, I, I mean, and I do also have to clarify that, that point with these Scranton Times. I do get, I do get impassioned about my, my stance on this issue, and when Don Frederickson and I were taking that exchange back and forth, I knew that medical marijuana was passed at the state level. What I did not know was that it included these stores opening, because that's what I was talking about. We got a thing here to go and do a ribbon-cutting ceremony, and I didn't know that they could do that before they researched this. I told, when the reporters called me, I said, "Well, how can they do this before researching it?" And he said that, that it was passed two years ago. I said, "But, that shouldn't be the same thing." So, I asked Barb Durkin to come and explain to me how this all happened, because I thought once this was passed, they would do a lot of research on it, and then come to the public and, you know, make a decision based on that, that research, but that's not what happened. They put the cart before the horse, and now the University of Pittsburgh or Pennsylvania is going to try and do some research on it after the fact. So, Barb, if you can explain what these stores actually are and who can purchase them and how that works?
Sure. Commissioners, I, I've had the opportunity to talk to Commissioner Cummings in regards to medical marijuana. I am by no means an expert.
Nobody is, yeah.
So, I'm not going to say anything that I'm not 100% sure of, but I'm obviously the director of, of the Lackawanna-Susquehanna Office of Drug and Alcohol Programs, and this particular topic has been brought to the attention of the drug and alcohol administrators across, across the state. The County Commissioners Association is looking into what implications medical marijuana may have on state and federal funding for drug and alcohol programs, specifically to Commissioner Cummings' question about dispensaries and, and who can go into a dispensary. The majority of that is being handled through the Department of Health. There's a registration protocol for someone who would like to get a medical marijuana card, and then caregivers can also get medical marijuana cards to assist their family members, and all of that takes place through registration portals through the Department of Health's website. I believe that the medical marijuana that can be purchased through a dispensary is, is supposed to be in certain forms, such as pill, oil, topical ointments and alike. I know, Commissioner, you had some questions about it being purchased in edible forms. I, I do not believe that currently the dispensaries that are within Pennsylvania can be selling it in edible form.
They cannot, no.
But, it doesn't hinder a family member or caregiver being able to place it in edibles to be easily consumed by a family member.
Correct.
So, again, I don't have a ton of information. I'm looking for some additional guidance from the County Commissioners Association. They did convene a task force that released some recommendations in March of 18. Some of the areas of concern still need to be answered, such as, you know, what deems someone under the influence in terms of, you know, driving a vehicle and getting pulled over, and then what implications this will have on, you know, individuals who access services through both federal and state funding.
Right.
But, happy to continue to, to work with you on this.
Yeah, the, what I wanted to, and please stay there, because I don't want, you know, apparently my word isn't good enough, so if I research something, it's not good enough. So, I need to make sure that you're standing here to discuss this with me. When this was passed, they, they got an advisory board committee together to research all this stuff. It took them two years to come out with these stores. Now, doctors are being certified, they reluctantly are being certified, because there's no research done on this, from what I'm finding, but, the way the process works, correct me if I'm wrong, is the doctor has a four-hour training, and then he or she is allowed to recommend this person be allowed to purchase this marijuana, if they have the qualifying diagnosis, which there's 21 currently accepted in Pennsylvania. Correct, okay. And then that, once they get that recommendation, they go to the state and online, they fill out the, the survey. If they're a gun owner, they have to give all their guns up and they cannot purchase a gun in order to get this card. Once they do get this card, they take that card to this dispensary, who, where a clerk works, right, a clerk? And that clerk tells them what they should be taking, not, it's not like these patients are getting a prescription, correct? Am I correct in that?
I believe that's accurate.
Thank you. So, there is, it's to the public, there's no prescription written for this drug by the doctor. This is a recommendation based on a diagnosis, that's it. Then they go to the state, they apply online for the ability to get the card. Where do they, do we ever decide, because we weren't sure where they were picking up the cards, I, I didn't get any answers on that yet.
I don't know the answer to that. I know how much the card costs, but I'm not sure exactly where they pick up.
How much does the card cost?
I believe it's $50.
So, we have to pay the state $50 if you want this card? And that lasts for a year, every year?
I believe so, but I think there are some questions about that as well.
Okay. So, they take this card and they go into this store where there is a clerk that was trained for, I, I don't want to say what, because there's different dispensaries do different things, but it's a clerk that's selling this drug to the people who they actually refer to as patients, but they're, they're not medical professionals that work in these dispensaries, as far as I know. They're, they own the store, correct?
I believe that's accurate.
Thank you. So, there's no milligrams, that, because nobody knows what milligrams people should take, because it was not studied at the FDA level to provide those. This drug is treated as though it's a, anything like, well, heroin is a Schedule I, correct? LSD, right? Okay. Thank you very much, Barb. I greatly appreciate you confirming this, so that I am saying it correctly. So, as far as I can see, there's not been studies on this, and when this did pass in Colorado, I do have some statistics that are on an anecdotal format, but this is, ER visits for kids rise significantly after pot legalized in Colorado. visits for kids rise significantly after pot legalized in Colorado. The number of teenagers sent to emergency rooms more than quadrupled after marijuana was legalized in Colorado, mostly for mental health symptoms, researchers reported on Thursday. You have to ask, why would it quadruple for marijuana, right? Why, well, there can't be that many kids that want to, that are that curious, or whatever. I mean, that's what I thought, anyway. So, that's when I started getting concerned, and that's when I looked it up, and that was about a month ago, and that's when I found, what I found to be amazing. Marijuana legalization means more children accidentally consume pot products. Medical marijuana that we have right now in Pennsylvania does not do this, but as Barb said, it can be added to food, like brownies, and cakes, and cookies. However, where it has been, and what people will be looking here to do and put on the ballot, is to legalize it recreationally. And this is the result of recreational marijuana. Gummy bears, candy, cookies, sold in these dispensaries that, by non-medical personnel as a product. That is why I'm upset about this. That's the reason. I am fully in favor of medical marijuana, if it is effective, and it has been shown effective in some instances. However, I implore the public to research this as well, and to do, go on YouTube and Google, and see the reactions that this is creating for some of these kids, because seizure disorder is not always something that's treatable with these THC. It's the cannabinoids, there's another difference. There's CBDs, and there's THC. So, the cannabinoids are what they're finding is actually beneficial to the public, not the THC, obviously, the THC is getting them high. But these edibles have driven people to jump off bridges, to shoot their wife. It's not pretty. And that's just the items that I Googled, that I found that information. But I do research the hospitals that are actually talking about it, too, and the doctors, and it's a big concern to the medical community, and it's a big fan, no, to kids under 21 at this point, because it does have the ability to cause you to have schizophrenia permanently, from the anecdotal studies that I've seen. And that is not something I could support, so that's, that's all I have to say about that, and I'd be happy to do a town hall on this, and have people meet and questions, and actually, I would prefer that. So, if there's anyone in the community that is interested in having some town halls on this information, and, and get some, you know, get some more research, and I would appreciate that, that be done, and I would hope that, before this becomes recreational, that there would be actual FDA studies, so that we know what kind of milligrams would be appropriate, and what wouldn't. And as far as edibles are concerned, I believe they should be, they should be banned. Edibles, absolutely ban them. I would never be in favor of them. It, it takes, you know, the one, multiple stories regarding this on the news from different states, where they got one cookie, and the person in the store said, "Just eat a cookie of, or a quarter of it, and wait an hour or two," because it could take up to an hour, or even two hours to take effect. And the people get impatient, and they eat the whole cookie, and they end up in a psychotic event, where they're in the ER, and that's what's happening, and that's why these things are occurring. So, just so the public knows why I don't support it. And also, with the, on to good news, the Conservation District, we are saving the farmers money, and I'm thrilled to be on that board. They're doing an excellent job, and I look forward to bringing more to, to show the public on what they're actually doing to help out our community, our environment, and Lackawanna County. And I thank Commissioner O'Malley for his idea on the fair, because I think it was a great idea.
It's good for the families.
And I am happy to support you on that, and I am not real thrilled with the authority itself, like, having to become an authority, but, you know, I, I think that in order to make it, you know, its own separate entity, and keep it out of the hands of the commissioners, to help it get a better start is a good thing, and, like I said, I'd support you in that. And I would like to also congratulate all the people that ran for office, winners and losers both, because it's a, it's a huge endeavor to run for office, and, you know, I think we're gonna see some really, we saw, everyone was a good candidate. I think everybody did a great job, and I applaud your efforts, and I congratulate the winners. And last but not least, I would like to thank the people who literally were, I mean, we got, sending me donations for my stance and my thoughts on, on medical marijuana, and for coming to my house, and calling, and sending emails, doctors, nurses, regular, I, I think every town in the county actually got in touch with me so far, thanking me for bringing this subject to the forefront. So, I thank you for your support on that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Terri, any?
I thank Commissioner Cummings. I think it's admirable that she brought this to the attention of everyone, but it, it isn't really something that the commissioners have any actual control over.
No.
It's a state and federal issue, but I think it's very important that they have your opinion, and they think about it maybe a little bit differently. Other than that, I'm, I'm done.
Thanks, Commissioner.
I'd also like to thank all those sentiments. It is in state and federal, but the, the gummy bears and the cookies are concerning, because they could be eaten by a child not knowing what they are, and it could be dire consequences, so that's something that's very concerning itself.
Or a pet, they show a pet.
Yeah, or a pet. To Bob Bowles, nurses do matter. My sister, Margie, God rest her soul, worked at Allied Services, and at her funeral, they brought in a bunch of patients that were never going to walk, and this is back in 1980, and they said she was an angel, and she took good care of them. So, yeah, nurses do matter, and I didn't have time that day, but next time if there's ever anything, I'll definitely be out there to support our nurses, because, you know, the doctors prescribe this, they do that, but the nurses are there 24/7, and to all the nurses, thank you for the great job that you do, they're just angels.
You're welcome.
The, I'd like to say, the annual Lackawanna County Job Fair is coming up on May 24th, 1 to 5, PNC Field, home of the rail riders. Please come up, be dressed for success. You might be interviewed right at a spot, you may be walking around the door with a job, so please come up. I'd like to thank all of our poll workers. It's, it's not just a 13-hour job, it's a 15-hour job. You have to be there an hour before, hour after, you have to drop everything off, there's a lot to do, you have to sign off, you know, people are good of character, and they do a fabulous job, so thank you to all our poll workers for what they do. Everyone who put their name on the ballot, not an easy thing to do, you know, you put your family out there, you know what I mean, you never know what's going to happen, but congratulations to everyone. And win or lose, congratulations, it's not easy to run for public office. On Monday, May 28th, make sure, okay, wait a second. I'm having a problem reading that one.
I'll let you use mine, but I have a triforce.
Yeah, let me see her, let me see.
They're not going to help you, they're bad. My eyes are bad, I don't, if you look down, maybe. Anybody have glasses that he can use?
No, that's, that's, I'll let that go for right now, I can get that in for the next meeting. But I'd like to just thank all of our, all of our veterans for what they do, and Memorial Day is coming up on Monday, May 28th. Make sure that you have an opportunity to get out to the memorial services, they're all throughout Lackawanna County. Thank our servicemen and women, you know what I mean, they really matter. We wouldn't be able here to have these, this county commissioners' meeting if it wasn't for their sacrifice. This, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Do you have a quick second to talk about the fair authority? Pat, any?